Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 3, 2014, will come to order. Let the record show all commissioners are present and accounted for except for Commissioners Clark and Cabe who are absent and excused. There are no non-agenda public comments, no meeting minutes to approve, and no new business, and so we'll move right into a continuation of the public hearing for the 2015 periodic plan and code update, which we've been conducting for a number of months now. This initial review, it will be for four subareas, so we'll be reviewing four subareas this evening. It is interesting to note Bothell has seventeen of these subareas, and yet all four of these are outside of the city limits of Bothell. So, we want to ensure several things this evening. First of all, consistency of language across all four, and actually, of course, across all of them, but certainly these four this evening. We want to position the subareas for that if annexation should occur, we would want this to be accomplished smoothly for the benefit of the property owners and citizens. And then we want to also incorporate the unique characteristics of these subareas. For example, the Locust Fourteenth Area Subareas is characterized by the flow of Swamp Creek through it, and this will show in our review this evening. North Creek also flows through another one of the subareas, Thrashers and Thrashers Corner. So with that as an introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Boyd, who will lead us through a discussion of these four reviews. And Dave, I did see in your memo to us that if possible, if we were able to complete this review this evening, we would, I mean, not only conduct an initial review, but actually complete it this evening, and I share that as a goal.
Okay, good. Thank you, and good evening. So I'm just gonna, I have a very short presentation because we did do pre-annexation, land use and zoning for these subareas in anticipation for the annexation election a couple of years ago. So, and at that time, we didn't go further, we didn't do full updates with all of the elements for these subareas, and we've decided not to do that at this point since there isn't any imminent proposals for annexation. That's something that can be done if there is a movement to, or a proposal to move forward on the annexation. So, the changes that I've presented to you tonight are simply bringing the partial subarea plans that we have into the format for the rest of the subareas. So, and again, we're taking a similar approach to the other subareas. And I wanted, in this kind of background slide, to again reiterate that we're not anticipating any, we haven't anticipated any and haven't received any property owner requests for these areas that are in our potential annexation area in Snohomish County, but just reiterate that the process will be to receive those by the initial hearing and then do any required noticing after that before the second review by Planning Commission. So tonight, we're looking at these four subareas that are entirely in unincorporated Snohomish County portion of the subarea: Locust Fourteenth Avenue West, Dampson Logan, Thrashers Corner, and Filbert Wine Sap. My title is not quite in proper order here, so. So since there are no substantive changes proposed, staff feels like that a single hearing might be adequate, so the next steps could include questions of staff, if any, public testimony, if any, and it looks like we will not have any, and then a page-by-page review of the plans if desired. If you've already reviewed them and don't have any comments and are ready to do a preliminary approval, you could jump straight to that. And if there are, but if there are any changes that you'd like to see brought back to you, then we would take direction on those, any changes to bring back for a second review. We haven't scheduled a second review, but the schedule is pretty packed, so we probably wouldn't bring it back until probably January 21st. So, that's the extent of my presentation. I do have the actual text available if you do want to do a page-by-page review of it.
Thanks, Dave. So I like your proposed next steps, and so let's just proceed with that. So are there any questions of Mr. Boyd, let's just say at a high level, and then if we can do a page-by-page analysis and do it quickly? I do have a few questions and comments, they're as much editorial, if you will, but let's have some high-level questions, and then let's do a real quick page-by-page. So Commissioner Gastineau.
Dave, just a couple of questions. One, presently on the annexations, we have no, we're not moving forward on any annexations, and we're just, I think that Bill had spoken to us about these, and these will come on just a piecemeal if possible, or we don't know, or we just, it's up in the air?
We don't know for sure. There's been some talk of that we might get a petition from, I believe it's in the Canyon Creek, not one of these subareas, but the one subarea that's partly within the city and partly in unincorporated Snohomish County, Canyon Creek. That's kind of in the northeast corner there, but I don't know how serious those efforts are, or when we might actually see a petition for those. So it's possible that it could lay dormant for a period, and that we might take another, that there might be another election to do the entire area at once, or it's possible that it could come in piece by piece.
And my second question is, with us recommending these zonings, there's always a possibility, I guess, or is there, when they do decide to come forward, that they get a request at that, if there was a request for a change in this, would that happen at the zoning, or would that have to go through another comp plan after the fact, after their annex? So we're setting up, so how does this affect the property that being annexed? What would be the process if they needed to change or they wanted something different?
Well, in terms of zoning, we did do the pre-annexation, land use and zoning, and did provide in these subareas, I can't remember if we added it or if it was already there, some of the basic description of these subareas. But what's missing are detailed policies and goals, policies and actions for some of the other elements, like transportation, and there, in some cases, there are some, there are some policies that were inserted in, with regard to housing and human services in some of the subareas, but in general, those would need to be fleshed out. But that could happen, that could either happen as a pre-annexation exercise, like we did with land use and zoning, or it could even happen as a post-annexation effort, which is what would have happened if the annexation election had passed.
The only reason I ask is, you know, not looking at this on such a minute detail to try not to end up with, you know, conflicts, because our zoning is not the same as Snohomish County, so I just, and I know you're trying to match as closely as you can, but I was just curious if, you know, future property owners coming into the city, what would be their process if they feel that for some reason, the zoning that we had put on this map doesn't match their existing or their proposed because of, and I can't, that's why I say, I can't think of all those different things in my mind when I look at every one of these zoning, this zoning map in front of me, so.
Right. Well, you're absolutely right. Snohomish Counties are 9,600, the way they implement that is quite different than the way Bothell does, and so you wind up with R-96 zoning that really looks like R-7200 or even more dense than that. And so we did try to take that into consideration in some, to some degree, as much as we could in the pre-annexation zoning, but I'm sure there will be some instances where we get a situation like we've got in Brickyard Road, where people say, "Well, under the county zoning, I could have done this, now I can't do that anymore, and I want to go to a more intensive zone." But I think we would probably deal with that post-annexation zoning unless we got a request for annexation that was predicated on addressing those kinds of issues beforehand.
So we do have, so there are ways to address it in the future?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other initial questions? Okay. At this point, I think, Dave, what I think would be, we could do this in a real expediential, expeditious manner, and that would be to just, let's do a real quick page-by-page analysis. It looks like you've got a PDF up there that has all the pages incorporated, and why don't we just bring a page up? If any of us have a question or comment, please just let me know, and I'll acknowledge you, otherwise I'll just say okay, and we move on.
Okay.
Any questions on LOC 1? Before we leave that, actually, I do, and this is something kind of inconsistent across all four of the plans, and that is just the location of this. If you look at the bottom paragraph, that says, "The subarea is located in Snohomish County," which I mentioned in my opening comments, would we call that unincorporated Snohomish County?
We could.
And the reason I ask that is, not in this one, but in another one of them, it actually says that it's bordered by, the planning area is bordered by unincorporated. So I'm going, is there a distinction between an area that's inside the city limits, outside the city limits but in our planning area, and then outside of that, that is actually an unincorporated Snohomish County? I don't mean to be difficult, I just wanted, just to be clear here of what we're talking about.
No, that's a good catch, and I'll look into that. I'm not exactly sure why it wasn't stated that it's in unincorporated Snohomish County up front there. And I did notice as I was going through these, I did the pre-annexation, land use and zoning for Thrashers Corner and Filbert subareas, and we tried among the different, we split them up among different staff, we tried to be pretty consistent, but I noticed that there were some inconsistencies, not all of which I addressed here, but this is a good chance to iron out those little glitches.
So, just to, you know, I'll leave it up to you to kind of wordsmith it, I'm just saying, we might just say it's located in unincorporated Snohomish County. We might also just say the subarea is currently not located in the city limits of Bothell. I don't know if we want to go there or not, but I know for me, on my first reading of this, I was a little confused as to what it is we're really talking about in terms of location. So that's my only comment on that page. Beyond that, LOC 2, any comments or questions? I think we're okay on that. Same with LOC 3. LOC 4. Before we move from LOC 4, I had one question, I'm not seeing any of the other commissioners come forward, and that is on the sewer. The last statement there says, "Ultimate treatment and disposal will be at Brightwater WWTB when that facility is commissioned." Has that now been commissioned?
It has, so we might, we should update that.
Why don't we update that? LOC 5. My only comment or question on LOC 5, and this is actually, again, true of all the policies, sections for all four of them, is that we refer to Figure 4, and quite extensively, and let's, I think you mean Figure 3, isn't that correct?
Yeah, so I did catch that up front, but I didn't, I missed it here, so that's another good catch.
And again, that's true for actually all four plans.
Right.
Okay. Seeing no others, we'll move to LOC 6. LOC 7. Okay. Oh, sorry. LOC 8 and LOC 9. We're good on that, Dave? So that's it.
And of course, we have the, this, the maps have also been updated, I didn't mention that.
Yeah, I did notice that, and again, I really support the going from four figures to three. I don't have, I think they're fine. I really do like the map of the entire planning area in the lower right, and then with the yellow highlighted, that helps a lot. I don't have a lot of, unless there are any other questions about the map, I think we're ready to move on. Do you have any questions of us?
Just one thing I wanted to point out. The proposal that we discussed, whether you first received on the land use element hearing, and that we discussed in the Shelton View subarea plan, included this R-2,800 parcel here, the Frueling Truck Company, the gravel mine, I guess you'd call it. So, we don't, I don't think we're going to be proposing any changes to the zoning there. I think the changes will be in the Shelton View portion of it, but the request was to include that area in the planning effort, so just wanted to point that out as one thing that we will be addressing in that, in the Shelton View plan.
Okay, yeah, thanks for highlighting that, and I do remember that, and that request that we've had of staff to look further at that entire, about 100-acre parcel there, but that's not in the subarea that we're discussing now, so, okay. So let's move forward to now the Dampson Logan Subarea Plan, and we would go again to dam 1, and I'll make the same point here. The only thing I saw a little bit different, you know, when looking at dam 1, I think it's a little confusing in that last sentence when we say 6.3% of the total city area. I think we mean the total planning area, right?
Mm-hmm.
So let's make that change. And then in the first paragraph there, the same idea, Logan Subarea is located in, we could say locate, is currently located outside the city limits of Bothell in unincorporated Snohomish County, would be my suggestion. Seeing no other comments or questions on dam 1, let's move to dam 2. Hearing, and seeing no other ones, let's move to dam 3. Dam 4. Dam 5. Again, what I have on dam 5 is the figure, reference to Figure 4, let's make sure those changes are made to Figure 3. Dam 6. 7. 8. And 9. Are there any questions or comments you have from staff to the Planning Commission in either the text or the maps for this subarea?
No. I'll go ahead and scroll through the maps here.
I did have one, I had one question, excuse me, no, not on that subarea, it's the next one, actually, so I'm ready to move forward. So let's now move to the 2015 plan for the Filbert Wine Sap subarea. Again, my, I won't repeat, but my same comments under the location, just to have some consistent language there. The only other question I had, which actually I answered as I went through this plan, was in the summary paragraph at the beginning, it's noted that the plan provides for continuing the suburban residential nature of the existing development throughout most of the subarea and a residential activity center. And I just wanted to make sure that we had actually had RAC zoning in this, and we in fact do, so I just was checking to make sure that our zoning was consistent with what we were saying was our objective for the subarea. Seeing no other comments or questions from the commission, we'll go to FW2. Okay, FW3. FW4. Again, my comments about Figure 4 being referred to. Figure FW5. And 8. Again, are there any comments or questions you have of the commission from staff on the text or the maps for this subarea?
No, I'm scrolling through the maps now, and one thing, your comment about the reference to the residential activity center, in the economic development element, I don't know that, I think that's referred to as a neighborhood activity center. It does have residential activity center, a residential activity center zoning designation, but I made a note to double-check and see if we're using the proper terminology there.
Well, I was, what I had noticed was just that portion, that particular parcel in kind of the northwest corner, RAC, OP and NV.
Right. So you're right, it does have that zoning designation, but generally, we refer to the activity centers as regional, community, and neighborhood, at least that's how we refer to them in the economic development element, so I'll have to do some double-checking to see what the correct term to use there is.
Great. Moving on to Thrashers Corner Red Hawk Plan. TC1, again, my comments on the location and just consistency in the language there. I had one question about, and this pertained to commercial development, schools, and schools was mentioned on TC2, as well as TC6, and that is, in the upper right-hand corner of this subarea, it's Zone CE, and there's Fernwood Elementary there right now. Just making sure I've got this right.
I'm gonna zip forward to that.
Oops. So this is the upper right-hand corner of the, where it's?
Far northeast corner, yeah.
Correct, and so that's currently Zone Civic Educational. My question is, is that where the new high school is going to be located?
The new high school is just to the northwest of that parcel, Fernwood, in unincorporated Snohomish County, so the high school won't be in the Bothell city limits.
Well, meaning in the planning area?
Or the, yeah, I'm sorry, in the planning area.
Or even, so even potential future Bothell city limits, the high school right now is not planned to be in it?
Not unless there's a reciprocal agreement reached with Snohomish County, and I believe that, I'm not positive about this, but I believe that Mill Creek's planning area extends down to ours, so.
To 196th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not positive of that.
Yeah, I always thought the 180th was kind of that dividing line between Mill Creek and Bothell's planning areas, but.
No, our planning area is definitely at 196.
It is.
What I'm not entirely sure of is whether.
How far south?
Mill Creek extends all the way down, or if that area is currently scheduled to remain in Snohomish County.
Okay. The only reason I ask about the high school, so thanks for clarifying that, is, and this is actually true even if it's not in our planning area, and that is that that high school is going to have significant impact on transportation, I'm thinking of particularly 524, and do we want to note that, that from a transportation standpoint, and there may be other elements in this particular subarea, as well as just the larger kind of area, that this new high school is being built, and there will be some future impacts? Just a thought.
I think that would be appropriate, I made a note of it here to.
So that, it could be put into, as I noted, either the school section or transportation as, it's something we know is coming, are there some things that we can do to mitigate potential increased volumes as a result of that?
There has been some discussion about extending some of our mapping of arterials into the unincorporated portions. I believe the decision has been that we just don't have the capacity to do a thorough analysis and do that to the degree it should be done at this point, so we're not planning on that as part of this update, but, so there won't be any detailed, you know, any further elaboration of transportation goals, policies, and actions. But I think adding mention of the school, which is new since we did the pre-annexation planning and zoning, as an impact to that subarea, even though it's outside, would be appropriate.
Good, thank you, I appreciate that. Let's see, what page were we on? I think we're back at TC, might have been, we might have moved forward to TC2. I didn't have any other, and I don't see any other comments or questions on TC2. Let's move to TC3. Move forward to TC4. TC5, again, the Figure 4 notes that I mentioned. Same thing with TC6. And that was where, under item number 12 there, again, the new high school is not in this planning area, so we probably don't need to mention it there, do we?
No.
But it would be more in the, in the opening section.
And also just.
Summary and profiles might be where we want to mention it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Just a, this is a bit of a fine point, but the civic educational is not a, we don't have a civic educational zone, it's a land use designation that exists in the comprehensive plan, but not on the zoning map.
All right, great, thank you for clarifying that. Anything else on TC6? Seeing none, let's go to TC7. TC9. So under urban design and policies, item number 1, ensure that improvements to Maltby Road west of Thrashers Corner Community Activity Center, York Road, and 196SE southeast retain a residential character which preserve and enhance residential character within the subarea, reference transportation policies. I read that about four times. I could not understand what that was talking about. Is, are we talking about the Maltby Road, or are we talking about the entire space west of 524? And I understand the kind of the general goal, and I have no problem with the idea of retaining a residential character which. of retaining a residential character which preserve and enhance residential character, but what are we talking, are we talking about the road?
Yeah, well, I'm going to have to look into that further and get back to you. I believe it's talking about the road and the, since it's in the urban design element, the, you know, the frontage character of the road, the sidewalks and trees, that those reflect that residential character, but-
That was initially what I, what I thought, but then when it kind of pulled in 196, York Road, then I was like, I don't know where, what we're doing here. So I guess I would just say, I don't think we need to bring this particular subarea back for a second review because of this, but if staff could just rework that language a little bit, just to clarify what it is that we're really asking here, and is it just a residential character along the Malp B Road? I think that's what we mean.
Yeah, and I don't recall inserting that in, when we did the land use and zoning, pre-annexation land use and zoning update, so it's, I think it's a carryover from before that, so, and it may not even be relevant anymore.
Okay, so if staff could just clarify whether that's even relevant, and if so, if it is, then just-
Clarify.
I think that, and by clarifying it, the part that got me confused was the York Road and 196 southeast. I didn't know, that took me away from thinking about the Malp B Road.
Yeah.
So that's enough on that. Anything else that staff has questions from us on either that subarea plan or the figures in that plan?
Just one thing that I also noticed going through here that wasn't quite the same is, in these elements that really don't have anything, in this subarea, it has some language that it's a placeholder for future language, and that the city will complete this section following annexation, should it occur. And I think that it would be good to use that consistently-
I agree.
...in these unincorporated subareas.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, and that was kind of, again, one of my opening comments in terms of just language consistency, so if there is a place that you can have that consistently used through all four of these plans, I think that would be great. Okay, I think at this point, we've completed that page-by-page review that you proposed. At this point, is a motion needed from us for preliminary approval of the review of these four plans?
I'm not sure it's absolutely needed, but it would probably be a good way to memorialize that, and so we can move on.
Well, let's, I'll ask to, see if I can hear a motion to do a preliminary.
Can you clarify specifically what specifically the motion would be?
Well, we're moving to approve the language as we've just reviewed. It means that no further review is necessary until staff brings back to us the final iteration of the plan, and it's some guidance provided to staff to allow, so there's no further review needed.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to preliminarily approve the four neighborhood reviews that we just discussed for Locust, Damson-Logan, Filbert-Winesap, and Thrasher's Corner Red Hawk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. This completes the continued public hearing of the 2015 periodic plan and code update. This public hearing will be continued forward, though, from this meeting to our next meeting, which will be next Wednesday, December 10. We'll move forward in our agenda. There is no study session this evening, no old business, but we do have a report from staff before you, I don't know if you have any comments for us, Dave, but I read the memo, I don't have any comments or questions, I don't know if any of the other planning commissioners do, but if there's anything staff would like to clarify or highlight for us from that memo, this would be the great time to do that.
Yeah, I know that the last hearing, which was fairly complex with numerous, both staff and private party requests for amendments, was a little bit confusing, and we thought it was, would be helpful to kind of put it, put the process down in writing to help as we, as we move through these, because we will be having other subareas that have multiple requests for plan and code amendments that require noticing and require going through a specific procedure, so. The one thing I did want to elaborate on is on page 2 of the staff report, a little, that when we do get to those subareas that have property-specific amendments, that we recommend that you take those up separately and go through the whole process of presentation of the proposal, questions of the proponent, public testimony, and then deliberations and a decision either to approve or to request that staff bring it back to you. And that's for a number of reasons. One, just to keep, keep the focus so we're not bouncing around from one proposal to the, to another, but also for those proposals that, where there's an appearance of fairness issue with one of the planning commissioners, so that they can recuse themselves and step out of the room during that, that piece of the meeting, and then come back and not be stepping in and out. So I think it's, it's really important to kind of keep that kind of structure to these.
Any comments or questions of Mr. Boyd of either the memo or the comments he made just now? I'd just say I really agree with that. I thought that in our meeting last, last week, that we kind of had a lot of balls in the air, we had, we had the planning, the, the plan that we're updating, which is, you know, a strategic document that we've been working on for months, and then we had more than one request in front of us, and it made for kind of a lot, a lot going on, and not that it was any big problem, but I think we can do a better job of just making it a little more, a little simpler and a little clearer for everybody. So I like how you've outlined it in this memo, or how Gary outlined it.
Another thing that I know that Bruce Blackburn is preparing for next week is, he's also making part of his presentation, in, as part of his presentation, some suggested motions so that, so that it's clear, and of course, you can vary from the staff's suggestions, but at least you'll have something to go by.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Any reports from members? Seeing and hearing none, we are ready for a motion to adjourn. Moved to adjourn? We are adjourned.